Okay, it is 6:03. I'd like to call this meeting's order. I would like to begin with our pledge of allegiance followed by a moan of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moan of silence as we think about those who have gone before us. Thank you. All right, Marie, roll call please.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Field Allen. Mr. Patson.
Here.
All present. We should have a time to go to the conference.
Andy, you still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
All right, Andy is joining us remotely. Andy, could you hear anything, Marie, you said?
Very, very dead old, so you may have to interpret for me.
I can...
You need my input.
I can certainly do that. Okay, a couple of quick announcements. The zoning board, next meeting is on August 25th at 6:00 PM at the municipal building. The zoning board and planning boards have recently designated the last Tuesday of each month to be the regularly scheduled meeting, if one is needed each month. The zoning board meeting will be at 6:00 PM with the planning board at 7:00 PM. So that's sort of a standardized thing. And we are looking for one additional member for each of the zoning and planning boards. We had a longtime member on the zoning board, Dennis Casey. Retired his position on that board recently. I know he was served for an awful long time, so I think I speak on behalf of everyone saying we would like to thank Dennis Casey for his years of service on that board. Okay, we have an update from the Cheney Library Board members. So if you guys want to take it away, thank you for coming. Oh, and one thing I forgot. Move it a little bit closer. This is my recording device tonight, so as one of the sure on the meeting's recording you can hear. No, you're fine there. Just speak nice and loud. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Trugger. I'm from Cheltenham, Cheltenham, Cheltenham. And we're here tonight because back in Cheney Library Board meeting, which we're reporting on the way to library. We talked about the fact that we wanted to get out into a community that we were able to promote the library and help people to know what a valuable asset library is for our community. We were encouraged to do that by the Upper Hudson Library Association, which we belong. And so Jim, who said, "Come spring, we'll drive you home." And people must go to various venues around town to fly some lines and see the building and the libraries and all of course, we all know that. And so now we're getting back into the swing of that. And thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time to share with me about the library. The library was started in the early 1900s as well. It's all of money that was used when the Charles Cheney estate. And it was completed in 1922, so two more years ago, we are currently in first place. Stay tuned for that. That's some kind of celebration ritual. And at that time, in 1922, we had 4,000 works. We had 400 papers. Now we have 4,200 works and 7,000 papers. And when I say 4,200 works, that's in our collection, but we belong to the Upper Hudson Library System, a company and other area libraries that gives us access to all of their collections as well. So we really do have great access to any materials which might lead, might lead. And as I say, when people think of the library, they'll usually think of books. But libraries are so much more than books today. You have DVDs, you have audio books, you have magazines, open newspapers, and you can have a subscription to Ancestry if you'd like to do research on your family, if you love library and beyond, and research your family history. There's all sorts of resources like that that are available to you. And in addition to the first book works, you also have the opportunity to go online and purchase books. If you can find a fourth book and it's sent directly to your window or tablet, just move your library card and you don't need to go to a library. Certainly over the last few months, I've spent especially helpful, maybe the time in our record, sit together, set up the course course, we also have some, it's really skyrocketing because people are able to get to one. We also offer popular services, group services, and thanks services for small people. We have public computers, six of them, is what I heard, if you're working in the internet at the time. And actually, the internet is available to people 24/7. If you leave the park and the back park on our neighborhood, it's an hour of steps in front of the library, you can access the internet for free with no password. It's an open internet, and so you're able to get the information at the time. So that's another benefit of going to the library. We've been fortunate, though, about the last eight years, there's only time to exact date, but it's about a year ago, we got our first, one of our first brands from the State Library Association. And with that, we finished off half of the lower level at the children's side. We put our children's function down there. We have toys, puzzles, videos, all sorts of things down there. Right now, because of the virus, all the toys got in the way, but you can still come down and pick up books, or you can go down and take out books. And so that was our first grant. And then the next grant that we got, we finished off the rest of the downstairs. We took two of the smaller rooms, we made into a larger multi-purpose room. We equipped it with all kinds of AV equipment that allows us to show movies for speakers coming in for presentations. And we finished off the area down here as well for our storage, to give us better storage and more stuff. And starting after that, I've had a little bit of problems with some water on this. And when we turned that off, we had some drainage issues on the outside. So we again applied for a brand, and you can see the brand that allows us to move rain in or the side drains that take the water away. I've got the roofs, trying to break out of that and the drought, and since it has some trees removed because the roofs got in trouble. And then we created a lens parking lot in the back, so now no one has to try to get out of their car on Route 22, go in the library, start in the back and come by with it. And at the same time, we did that, to improve the air quality in the library, so we could install some new air conditioning in there. And we do have air conditioning up and down, which makes a very pleasant place. The library, we bought everything that we wanted. So that was part of that grant. Well, as things go, we kept thinking, "Well, what else do we need?" And the one thing that we found was that now we've got the parking lot in the back. Most people are not using that. To come up the little brick walkways from the parking lot to the arena, there actually are three steps that come up from there to that, didn't it? For anything food has mobility issues, those steps can be used. So now we've applied for one more grant, and hopefully the last one. We keep saying, "Now, listen to this." But anyway, I want to stand together this next. We're going to extend the parking lot essentially along the side of the library. Here, the double doors, if you know what I'm talking about, can be on the east side of the library, just like for the grass. But extend that parking lot to a little bit to create a couple of handicap parking spaces. And then we're going to have a greenout that will come from the existing greenout, but go along these stairs on the one side, and that man will circle around and come to that parking lot. So if we don't know if we want to get that, or that, we've submitted that, and now we're here about that. But we're hoping that we know that it's accessible, because the funds of the library have been there, and they've raised money. One of the things that they did a few years ago was to install a chair that will allow people to get from the first level down to the lower level. So between the new roof that's going to come in and this joke, we really are fully accessible. Friends of the library also purchased a nice desk. We took it into our fireplace there, and a couple of new accessories here. I think we had some, on the last sale, we were in here doing your own advice, and sent you the picture of that. And the library has also purchased computers. So only here is they have done a lot of great things for the library, not computer devices. We do have a historical page in there that we refer to. What's our first place to be things like us, so that you're getting information regularly? We have a few news letters. If you're not on that, then thanks for the library. Just send your email to librarianexdirector@chewneylibrary.org. Director@chewneylibrary.org, and you stay on, you don't need news letter. And every month, you will get an email from Sarah Getta, and she'll have a wonderful program that's coming up for that one. And of course, a library card. I hope all of you do have a library card. If you don't have one, you're free. And all you have to do is hop in the library sometime, and you can possibly, and actually to get a library card online, if you go online, with the information you need to get that library card. And with that library card, you have access to all of the many things that I just told you about. So it really is a vast source of wonderful information for all. But we're just going to thank the town, which we are, and we feel our funding comes from the town. The village president is at far as the town, so it's important too. So you just want to know how, want y'all to know how appreciative we are of our program that allows us to do all those wonderful things, work with everybody, including children's story hour. We make films with children's story hour online. If you're on the Facebook page, you'll see somebody that comes up, and she does a nice little story hour about maybe a claw, or a protein claw, or some, just all kinds of things that go on, honestly, that can happen. I'm one of the activities that are on course to work on. We are, oh, we have a 50% capacity right now, before we get nothing else. We can include Santa Fe, St. Louis, and so forth. We have a screening, a checkout desk, and we're only allowed a second time, and they can only stay there a couple minutes at a time. So I'm sorry, but we have right now. We do also have, when we talk first, I get up. So if you don't feel comfortable, please go over to the hall, the library, and say, "I want this particular book," or "I'm sad outside," or "Shelter outside," and get one for a video, whatever it costs, just to come home. So hopefully, everybody would think that's not all that I needed to, to ask, to share with anybody that has that experience.
I totally agree with you guys. One such chat.
Thank you.
Yeah. Library still on our road.
But the 2011 Congress actually has, that is easy. What happened was, we shunned, because we forget to take it public, to stay within our building was public. So we have it out on the road to the benefit meeting, and they do give us credit and say that it is our, our thing. But that's what it is. The one thing that they did do last year, they allowed us, we got permission from the Grand House of People and so forth, they allowed us to a beautiful complex, which we prayed, and they do have that central work, where the fireplace and the kitchen and so on, so we do have that here now, but it is, it is all that.
We gave you an order to do that for one week's itself.
We are all of the people. It's nice, though, wonderful. Yeah, this most recently, and this is kind of produced bad news, but we, as a builder, as a town, because of our economic status this year, this period, we qualify for 90% conversion because of our three and a huge launch and our current situation. So if we get this, this grant for the, for the rent of the new parking lot, 90% of that bill will be for by the library, so that all the 80%. So that's great.
Any other questions? Awesome. I know my family has been raised in the library. We actually have a bunch of eBooks right now on loan that we're listening to, so it's a tremendous resource, so.
Other stories on the floor?
Yep.
Well, thank you. Both came in. We have some other commitments tonight, so we do have to speed one up. I hope to hear that. If you don't want to get a library card, but we have some new papers to get.
Thank you very much. If, I think we have to sign out, sign in sheet late, so if you're on your way, I'll just make sure you sign in on that. Oh, yeah, okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, the very end, it's the wonderful musical event for the children, okay, come on down. We even got a smart, high-tech commercial, my goodness, which is great fun.
Yeah. It's true.
Thank you all so much.
Awesome.
Thank you, David, and our foundation partners. We don't require, of course, two weeks, we have some special, which is a lot of work to do by the library. It's not, it's not short. So stuff has been, we've got this, and we've got, and they have, you know, many books that have been, and stuff that's been, it's been a while for the book. We have a lot of books that they have, you know, so that's why I kind of, you can do it well, because if you can get, think about, I'll tell you, the thing we use is self-serve on the movie.
That's great. That's great.
You should come sometime, you should have a stand in the hall.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. All right, mayor updates. We did meet, the Chicken Law Group met. I'm in the process of finalizing the document of what our recommendations will be. It was a great meeting, so thank you, guys, who were there for that. Really, really good time. And we'll be sending the compiled list of what we're sort of thinking would make sense for our Chicken Law to Andy. He's going to look it over. And ideally speaking, at the September meeting, we're going to be introducing a Chicken Law, so put that down in your, in your book. And it will go through the standard format of, we'll introduce it, we'll have it online for people to review. We'll have our public hearing on at the following meeting, probably in October. Looking forward to seeing all of the happiness and/or frustration of the possibility of Chicken Laws. But I think, I think it's a pretty responsible law. It avoids a lot of things that I think are going to be the people's concerns. I know Vanessa and Bobby were there, along with some other people, and it was really, really good time, so. Two other things I don't have here, but just really quickly, and the chief is going to touch upon this more in his report, but there were just an awful lot of agencies and a lot of people involved in the search for the missing resident that unfortunately ended in tragedy. But there were just so many people involved, so many agencies involved, and it was really great to see that local businesses putting forward, putting forward food for free to, but I'll let chief go into that. But I just want to also thank the chief and all of the agencies for that. And also, I had wanted to be more, I'm a little bit, a little bit, I'm quite behind on some things at the office, so I just want to put out there my apologies for being behind on some things. I, this month was supposed to have been the month where I'd catch up on things, but just like everything else in 2020, there's been curveball after curveball. And I did not think I would have so much time doing school stuff during the summer, but welcome to COVID-19, so. So I just want to put that out there. Yeah, we wrote that in, Mark. A lot of special things for you. All right. Remember not to include that then. Okay, this is the people to be heard section. If anybody would like to speak, just as a reminder of your meeting, we record our meetings to keep track of things, and they're available on our YouTube page. As a reminder, if you want to speak, please share your name and address, and then the floor is yours. Do you have an idea on how many you want to speak? Uh, yeah, well, you don't have to. I mean, it's small, bro. We can hear you.
I didn't want to be here, and I can't seem to get any information. And I was in the top parking lot in June, and we started to talk about what's the first about the food supply, and you ever get this sense of something just isn't right? You die, and that's not a couple of things, and I went on the phone, I thought, and he said, "Well, he said, we can't go here." So the guy sat in the last place, and I'm thinking, "How's the guy coming to mom?" And I remember that a police officer, well, twenty bucks was there, paying, as this guy was upset, and I said to him, "Do you know this guy at all?" He looked at the tower, he looked at me, and he said, "No." So I tell him, "No, no." And I'm thinking, "We got him, and he didn't hit him." His story, the police officer was checking, there's no video, unfortunately, it's a lot of them. But, so, we got a visit, we got a anonymous meeting, but as I'm walking in the parking lot, in the parking lot, I'm in the middle, he called in, and I assume he was coming up, and I was so, I guess, now, he's not going to ask, he didn't hear, he goes to things we've read on, okay? He's lying to me, that I came around his car, which I didn't ask him around the car. So, anyway, and the thing is just so, seeing right, with that, before the police got there, a sheriff's car came up where your brother was, and I was coming in. And I went to see, I remember, I saw a lady, I knew, asked her to borrow a car from my husband. And I got the message, the girl was on the car, right to my house, because my husband had been picked up. He threw it down the car, and he looked up, I dropped the lock, I think he came over. I said, "I got his car." And he said, "Car?" I said, "No." He was down the ground, and down the ground, and suddenly, he picked me, and the girl in the car, she was down, like, "Son, son." They never got out of the car, never. So when the police come, and we were doing meetings, and when they got the hit, my director said, "You get me, immediately, I'm going to the car, stop." He goes, "Laura, over here." And he says, "Yes." He did something, he's like, "Put my hand up, I'm going to stop in the car." So, morning just now, I know the problem of getting to the driver's seat. But anyway, when my husband's saying, "Died last night," and my wife said, "What's going on?" "Died last night." So anyway, the police, the first officer, and then the guy came in, I said, "What the hell?" And then I said, "Have you been dreaming?" The police officer says, "He doesn't have been dreaming." Now, they've never ever got either one of the cars, never. So the second officer would come, and the first officer was going to my car. He goes, "Immediately over to the car," and they're laughing, and I'm thinking, "Well, someone, you're giving somebody a..." The whole thing, this was not right. So the officer came over, took my, they didn't know my license, took my application, that they'll be able to get their report, their report, they already get that further. So that was on two, two very, um, I was a minor, I was a student, I had to follow them. But anyway, the police chief came down, and I said, "They acted very very condescending." It was, I said, "I know they didn't believe, right, they were very condescending." He was going to, the officer, he was going to give a translation, he was going to message about my experience, and he was going to stop, and I was going to say, "No." There was a thing I forgot about, it's a funny thing, I was going to say, "Look," I go in, and I'm, I'm getting a little here, I'm going to pick up the phone, I'm going to manage one, and I'm right here, I don't know why, I don't have all the words, the top rate, and everything, but anyway, it's not staying on. I said, "I'm here to pick up the reports." She said, "That's the league, my name is, my name is John Van Hall." The league goes, and says, "That's, he's taking me to men, I'm going to have to come in." So I go in, and they can't find the report, there's another officer on the computer. And so we're all going, and the guy, the officer on the computer, has something like, "Oh, it's not finished." But at the same time, when the first cop finds it, and the first person who's organized that, he opens it up, and inside is this incident report. So the other cop is on the computer, he prints, now, this is all two guys, he prints out, this is the picture taken. So I'm going home, on a Friday afternoon, looking for time, and I'm really reading it, and the guy says, "We did nothing." I thought, she said, "I didn't leave his stuff on there." I thought about, I said, "This is a lie." I said, "He did." He said, "Well, what's this look like, that's in the June 26th, I have that somewhere." So I'm really reading, another thing that's not right, I have to readdress the bureau, and I'm going, I didn't, that's where the second police officer was. So I called, I'm supposed to go, Jerry, not the second cop, oh, my house. So I'm thinking, "Okay, this is a lie, this doesn't seem right." But no one's going to let, and it's not something that happens. I requested foiled, for your information, with the 911 cell, I was denied. I searched the newspaper, and we are reading the next eleven.
I don't recall seeing one, but that doesn't mean it didn't come, and I haven't buried my desk.
I called all over, how do I get, I'll call them now, and they'll never tell. Well, for some reason, the typical mom, I would be honest, and it's a lie. So I talked to... for some reason, the typical mom, I wasn't gonna answer, so, I talked to a man, and the county attorney, well, he's not, I've got a lot of foil, he's not, I called him up, I said, why was in that, New York State, New York State, county law, such and such a number, well, I can't deal with it, so, I went to my cell, and we got another lawyer and another attorney, I said, can you believe the county, definitely, my mom's father couldn't, he's like, dead silent, I'm like, I take that, and now, now I'm thinking about how, if we should legally count it, so, I do a appeal, I sent that out last week, then the day after I sent it, I call on twenty eighth of July to find out, before I send the appeal, to find out what they decided to make, they need you, the other word says, no, he's still working on it, and we don't know how long it's gonna take. This is like, that's like, someone doesn't want something about it, I think, if you're a professional, I think, if a person in the car, who's related to the police officer, you never should have been there, they didn't have a dress, as his, which I don't believe is correct, because I think she has an apartment and a roof, so, the whole thing, to me, I don't know about anybody else, doesn't smell right. And if you can do a foil request for the nine one one cell, because I was told that, that's why you have to use a letter, to me, if you would make with me, and tell us, use the mail, foil requests to the county, and probably will get it.
If you question me, if you look at the nine one one call, if you, if you look at the record, the nine one one call, if you look at the one way, formated, it would, yeah, it made, it got, it got called, or dimensioned, second.
Yeah.
That said, before you go to all these things, that the county attorney, I would be more than happy to fall down there, and I ask them to send you the relevant, so that you can see, because I'm very nervous, I'm sorry, I would say, I'm a pain doctor, and I'm, I'm not really, now, I can assure you, as I spoke to you, that the officers will transfer them to the community, yeah.
They, I was, I was, what's, what's a beautiful law, state, if someone is hit, and I didn't live hard, I didn't have a body, they're a thing, because they have to be tested, they're drunk, not for.
I can't, I can't.
I'm just, man, this is your fault, well, well, we can't have that.
You don't, like, leave it for, leave it for, I just can't get someone, if you could read, get one, if someone's coming, it shows, you know, you, you, if I don't have, you know, they didn't, the officers, I would not, and they explained it, they didn't, they didn't, I can never, I can't, if I don't, I can't, if I don't, I can't, if I don't, I can't, you see, that there's no time.
Well, they have, they have, they have a telephone.
Look, I can't, you're pretty long, if you wasn't on the cell phone, when they got there, and they had, they had a cell phone, and said, no, then I have to go, what he said, if you know a little bit, it's, it's, it's important.
And you were, I'm not, I was, I was, I was, I'm not, I'm not.
As to the nation, this community, I'm, 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 but I have to leave the officer, or the second officer, on the way, and I could be wrong, because the officer, the officer was there first, that's what he built.
It was, it was, it was.
It seems that. I, 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 Patricia, Patricia, I, I, I did not find the Facebook message, I just found it now,
because in my, it was in my personal Facebook and not the Village Facebook, so I didn't see it, because I I don't see the requests when people were outside my friend circle, so, I apologize on that. Um, I will look into this, um, if you can, I'm gonna message her now, so she has, so she knows that I can get through to it.
Well, she did it for me, you don't have to.
Okay, um, so my apologies on not seeing that, my apologies on not seeing the letter, I it it's likely on my desk, and I just missed it, because I've been so overwhelmed, but that that is on me, so my apologies, uh emphatically on that. Um, we'll get you the information, um, I'm confused on the foil requests, because that doesn't line up with what I know about foil, and if you go to the Department of State, the New York State website, there are a ton of opinions that you can read and download on foil, and what things are exempt and what things not, I'm in no way an expert on this, um, but that doesn't seem right to me, but your your concerns are warranted, and we'll get you some information.
Right, but it depends on the state laws, and I'm I'm just not familiar enough with
nine one one calls for foil, I've never had to do that before, but you your point is, on that is well made, we will, we will get back to you. Um, do you, um, can I have your contact information on a piece of paper, so I can get back to you? It's on, it's on the, okay, we have that, okay, I'll get back to you in a couple days, my apologies.
The back of the car was the last, and it's what they taught me, but that was the second police officer, he goes, the, 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 the,[1164.87]
... For the rest of the lives of the people who are present. This is the year of the people. Service quarters, I have to call them on highlight. The message will seem to be up there. They're trying to be different. And one thing that service, the chief of service, of the service that ran from going to the biggest. Here's the model. Um, this is pretty much. Um, so the increase in that. Actually, it's not quite. Um, we're just looking for what you call it. Um, he got a team board to frustrate with each other. Um, he rests for a little bit. And then, and then he needs to character. I don't think he can do it by child. So all attention, rest, and sort of kind of. So it's not bad. Um. First, the rest of the time together. All of this. Music computers. Um, and I really encourage the parents. Focus on what's happening. We think that all of them, they're all curious. Of course, people aren't there if they don't know. Basically, the exchange. It would be important for them to, uh, uh, just. I was about to. Education. I think it's a whole problem. Continue to make some work up. It would be disturbing if it's just one time. One of the brought in, you know, like, uh, basically. Such a prime example of life. He could be, um, who will take the next. We brought that up. Um, as everyone knows, on Saturday, I think that was my fourth major mail. We reported this extensive service about. Please, five channels, certain wrestling. Or one of you consistent, for a day, of course, himself. Uh, one person. To catch this. And while this, since I was one of those people. In the middle of the town and residence. As well as, um. When memorial service today, um, held at the. Our commission of the town. Of course, it was well attended. Um, during. Several, we don't care that. What the last one was something, you know, guys. So it's a traffic engine, but, um, a whole. He said he was firing. The other week, I do want that, um, gypsy tracker. They ate. Oh, well, thank you. Guy had a patient, they showed up. Neil, uh, full company built right there. Which is plenty of money for a little world guy. Um, he's great. If you have one question. On that, the fan stand bar, he needs to go. Yeah, he's given to me. It's not a lot of people. Um, help out. And this is more than power. Um, no, we had a full time on the vessel. He steps in the system. We heard that night, for those who were present. So everyone in the building. Like, you know, come back. They respond. Um, to. Something that you don't want to do, but when you can't do it. Um, you want resources to be there. And they were there, so I'm glad that everyone. Their assistance all night. All night long. With stuff on their. Still don't want to stay with it. If they may get one, they're not going to stay. You know, now.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? It's been a very trying month or two, so, thank you. No.
But we don't get to say that.
Perfect. Perfect. Hold it in the, uh, GAC building. Andy's on the phone.
Andy, if I can meet up with you, maybe tomorrow from the office. You can give me a call. I just have information to this time. On you, uh, the, um.
Andy, can you hear this?
The two right of law, such as fifty. Uh, you got to buy personnel.
Andy, can you hear all this?
I can't hear him. You'll have to interpret.
Uh, he wants to set up a call tomorrow or the next day. He's got an update on the.
This is, uh, uh, he's district attorney's.
District Attorney's Office and the request for personnel documents. So call, uh, call Chief tomorrow.
In the rain, I would have.
I'll do that.
Alright, he said he'll do that. Alright, thanks. Um, any other questions for the Chief? Motion to approve, uh, the Chief, uh, the police report? Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Craig. All in favor? Posed? Carries? Uh, code enforcer report, Mark?
Uh, I was going to. I'd like to know, uh, these changes.
That's part of the job. That. So you said Jason owns this now?
Jason's.
Okay. Um, is that building, uh, um, oh, that's a building. Oh, building for demo has been issued on, on that one three Shaw. Is that coming soon?
Uh, there are some things that go. Ask me later, but there. On the yard. You got to do that all on the outside. They must be waiting or something.
Okay.
They're going to discuss this last one. Part of the project. Or initially.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Bobby. Second, I'll give it to Craig because he's closer, sorry. Uh, all in favor? Posed? Alright, carries. Thank you. Uh, clerk, deputy clerk report. Anything anyone wants to highlight? Yep. Alright. Yeah. Alright, uh, let's see if any questions, uh, for Marie. Looking for motion to approve. Thank you, Ben. I'll give that one to Emily. Uh, all in favor? Posed? Carries. Thank you. Harvey report. Anything Bobby, Neil want to highlight? Neil? Come on, we know you're a big talker. Good.
One record for that. Few days ago. Now, that was, uh, Matt P. Welcome to. Maybe just everybody. For an ATV side by side. Um, vehicle. Use this. Most of those departments actually.
You know, I saw that in your, uh, report, and I know, um. Uh, Fleming Town Supervisor Nassau, uh, pursued a grant and got a really nice, uh. ATV piece of equipment that they've, they would be using for. Situations like the, uh, the various rescues and searches that have happened and. Uh, some of the things. So I think that's a good route to, to go for. Um, I'm gonna. We'll start looking. I'd be, I'm gonna reach out to, um, Dave Fleming and see what's. Um, what grant they got. See if we can go that route. And, uh, and Ben's gonna be our grant guy. Anything else you want to mention? Yep. So, uh, we emailed the proposal. I forgot to get it on the, um. Yeah, the one from Bradley's. Um, this is a proposal to install. Parts and labor, three large diameter ceiling fans. In this area and the highway garage. Seventy-two inches or larger. Um, price, ten thousand, two hundred dollars. Pricing good for thirty days. Andy, did you hear all that?
Unfortunately, I did not, but, but.
Um, we have a proposal that we received from J A Bradley and Sons, um, our local electric contractors. To install three large diameter ceiling fans in the highway garage. It's ten thousand, two hundred dollars. Is that something we could move on tonight if, uh, the board so decided to do it?
Um, yes. Subject to check of the village's procurement policy that might require, I mean, getting a couple more.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll try to dig up on that. Does anybody have any questions for Neil while I do a little bit of digging, uh, into the procurement policy?
Well, that's rather just stupid. I'll try to look at it too. I know I have a hearing.
Alright, thank you.
Neil, why, why didn't this get, wasn't this on the initial, um, there? When we built the building? Uh, I, I. Okay.
Was that one of the cost-cutting measures? Is that, was that like, because they were so over budget, we had to cut, or is that? You, one of the things you suggested that they just decided not to do?
No, they, they very much, they were big on. They found why, uh, probably against the paragons. There's no word of, 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 uh, actually one of them. Not for things that are, uh, teaching. My, my, we were saying, call the board. Hold the, uh, hold the, uh, 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 uh. Do a trade-off. Yeah, who is it? Uh, I don't know. I don't think I need it. Probably for most. Connecting for, you're at my.
So even if you mean just the funds, like, you know, that's ten thousand dollars, where, where the funds come from?
They said, they said there's still money in that. Why one? Doesn't mean cash.
No, it's, it's not on point. Andy, have you found anything?
Yeah, I have. I'm just finishing going through your procurement policy.
While you're, while you're doing that, did we approve the, um, highway department report? Alright. Thank you, Bobby. Craig, all in favor? Posed? Carries. Okay, report was approved. Andy, what did you find? Are you ready to talk?
Uh, I am. So. Your village's procurement policy. They, that. All purchases of supplies or equipment. Which will exceed nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars in the fiscal year. Shall be formally bid. So, you, you've got one quote of over ten thousand dollars. Now, this is more restrictive, I understand, than state law requirements under the general municipal law, but this is the village's procurement policy. That purchases of supplies or equipment over. Nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars does require a formal bidding. Uh, any purchases less than ten thousand but greater than five thousand. Require a written request for proposals and three written quotes from three vendors. So. This, this one's awfully close to that line, okay? You've got. If you estimate that it could be purchased for. Under nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars for more than five. Allowed to get a few more quotes, but if they come back and they're in excess of. Nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars, it does under your village's procurement, uh, policy. Require more formal bidding. I'm sure you don't like that answer, but that's the answer to the village's procurement policy.
He's smiling and jumping for joy. Um, does, does it require a motion to put it out for bid? From the board?
Well, if they're gonna go for a full bid, generally, yes. There's, uh, a motion to authorize the, uh, publishing of formal requests for bids. Um, but again, if. Neil thinks that realistically it's between five thousand and let's say ten thousand. Then, it's a, it's a less formal process of, uh, requesting three proposals from three vendors. It really depends on what your good faith estimate of the purchase is gonna be.
Yeah, he was, uh, me, alright. So I don't. Yeah. I think, uh, I think we need to get more proposals. You can pass on the, uh, spending issue with, uh, to Bradley. As well.
Is there anything wrong with that, Andy? To do that?
Andy, is there anything wrong with passing this information on to Bradley?
With, asking what information on the.
The, uh, the procurement policy, um, specifics about the, between five thousand and, and under ten thousand is a.
No, no, no. Your procurement policy is the public record. Anyone can come in and get a copy of it.
Alright. Yeah. Well. We'll see what they, they come back with. Alright, Neil, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think we can act on anything tonight. Is that what you guys are thinking? Yeah. Sorry, Neil. Okay. Alright, motion to table?
Well, well, if we, so, we, if we don't think, we, we can't even ask. We have to ask, uh, Neil, if he's prepared, it's correct.
Yeah.
And we don't need to do that.
No, no, he, he just needs to get three, three proposals. No need to table anything. We'll just come back to it. Okay. Alright. Alright, thank you. Sewer Department reports. Um, don't think there's anything in particular to, uh, point out. Thank you, Craig. Second, very adamant, was that Ben? Wow! That's radio, the radio voice, Bobby. Uh, any further questions? All in favor? Posed? Carried. Thank you. And finally, the water report. Um. Emily, anything you want to highlight? Yep. Okay. What's that? Yeah, more than normal. Water leaks this, this, this time. We, and those went out in the mail today? Yeah. A lot more water leaks from, and our system is designed so that if there's even, even a small usage but consistently over, uh, what's it, twenty-four hour period? I think that's it. It basically flags it. So when we do the reading, it says, hey, there's been a leak. Maybe, maybe it was a running toilet and somebody fixed it, but we still send those letters out, so. To the, to the, yeah, to the homeowners. It only goes, I think, when we do the readings. I've gotten one in the past because I had a leaky toilet that I was too lazy to fix. Go team. But, uh, yeah, but I think they're only accessible when you do the readings. Is that correct? Um, and also, we have, um, a letter that's going out in the utilities, um, bill. That highlights a few points. It does, um, address something that's out, assuming that we pass it, it will, it will go out. They're ready to go out. I'm assuming we pass it, but it does remind people of the water, uh, restriction, water usage restriction. Um, it does address and request people. To take care of the trash and littering problem that's been going on in the Hoozie River Greenway. Um, addresses the fact that board meetings will be held here likely through November, um, depending on heating. Um, and the village office hours. I emailed a copy of that. It'll, assuming we, uh, approve, I know you guys have already, uh, mentioned you're in favor, but assuming we approve the, um, the water pay extension officially tonight, it will go out with the letters this week. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the water department reports. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Nassau. All in favor? Posed? Carries. Thank you. Uh, minutes. We have, uh, minutes that were sent out a while back for the July fourteenth regular meeting. Any issues with the minutes? Hearing none, looking for motion to approve? Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye? Posed? Carries. Great, thank you. Trustee committee reports. We'll start with Bobby on this side.
Uh, the only thing that I think is regarding the trash containers. Definitely, I spoke to people. You know, when you see.
Thank you.
The lady over there, uh, this next, uh, is. Some of the employees that last week. Inspector, come on, thank the making.
Yeah.
Apparently, for, for, for India. So, uh, we asked, there's the only C. You're gonna be a two thousand, seven hundred, one thousand, the only C. You're willing to. Front the line, just, you know, all three of our, uh, we're getting married. Where the line is, it's a big thing. You can put it back, I thought, I thought, and then, and then.
Okay. Alright. Marie had brought that up as something, uh, I don't. Group's getting one. Alright, thank you. Ben? Just happy to be here. Craig? Kevin? I don't know, Doug. Hippie in a Volkswagen must be quoted. Hmm. I will. Alright. Okay? Yeah. Yep. Alright.
Um, the other thing is, we still don't have our parking law. Graphic yet, especially by medicine.
Andy, did you hear that?
I didn't, actually. Could repeat.
Uh, we do not have the parking, uh, law. Drafted yet, so we're gonna try to put an emphasis on that and get that ready for the next meeting.
Right, on the parking lot. There, there is one, in, in, in kind of rough shape that had a lot of, uh, options. And if that was Kevin that was speaking, just confirm, I do have his email inquiry. And what I need to do is sit down directly with him, step through that, get it in a proposed form for the whole board to review. Uh, and for you to review. So, just confirm that with Kevin. I, I do need to schedule a time with him. Likely next week. We should do it sooner rather than later.
Sure, I'm in Troy, most of next week.
Kevin says he's in Troy for most of next week?
That's perfect.
Alright. Alright. Andy, just to pass on what just happened, um. The Chief brought up, there's confusion about one of the parking lots and who owns it, and Kevin's gonna reach out to the assessor's office. And try to get a map of specifically that location, and, and the Chief wants to make sure that the law has a, sort of a list, an itinerary of what exactly his village owned, right, Chief? So, just, just so you have that, Andy.
Got it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I, I emailed Neil. Neil was holding the sign right now. Put up something. People, it's like, they can't find it. Some of the signs. Um, that's, uh, the whole way down. Are you here? No. He don't park it in the town. Like, that's now. And I didn't, I don't park it in the town. So, the first. I'm only doing, is there a park? Top of the little, little, little. Right, John? Is this no parking from the top of the question, the building? So, this is the floor, the, 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 the. Yes.
Chief saying call him anytime and every time. That's what, that's what he's saying. All right, Kevin, did you have anything else? Did you have anything else? Go for it. Andy, we haven't seen any guidance from the governor on community service type things, have we? Is that something we could resume?
Uh, repeat that for me. Guidance on what?
Uh, community service. We don't have any community service right now. It's been, um, on hold because of COVID. Is that something we can, we can return to? I know the last time we spoke, last month, um, Jerry was kind of okay with it because he was quite busy with the season, but is he, uh? Andy, let's talk tomorrow or Thursday on if we can, uh, open up community service again.
Okay.
Yeah. Be nice to get that. All right. Yeah, Andy, let's talk about that tomorrow, okay?
That'd be fine.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Kevin? All right, thank you, Vanessa. Emily? Yep. Awesome. Yeah, and, uh, no issues with the GAC change out. They're doing the, um, was it the flushing tomorrow? Finish it off, I don't know. So everything, everything's going fine there. Uh, all right. Um, old business. Um, still want to wait a couple months, uh, on the transfer station discussion, but I do want to, uh, leave that on there, so I'm looking for motion to table.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Emily. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Neil, probably around, uh, September or October. We should start talking about that legitimately of, uh, twenty twenty-four. Nothing, just moving on. Um, we don't need, uh, the question on the funding for the garbage can purchase from LDC is already taken care of, so. Well done. Thank you. On to new business. Uh, we have a few resolutions that were sent out before. Thank you. Uh, the first resolution is a resolution extending time for payment of water bills issued during period of emergency declaration. Just gonna, you, we guys all have copies, but what's that? Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls and regular session duly convened as follows. For the village water bills issued during the current billing cycle, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls hereby extends the time period for payment to October sixteenth, twenty twenty, uh, prior to the imposition, uh, of late penalty. Provided however, such extension shall apply to only those village water bills issued in the current billing cycle during dependency of the Village of Huesic Falls local state of emergency as described herein. Looking for someone to introduce the resolution? Thank you, Emily. Second, Vanessa. All right, any discussion on this?
Um, the last bills have been coming in steadily, the property taxes, we, you know, we went out on us. Up to last week, I was still getting payments from the April online and, and by check, so.
But it's been going pretty good, right?
It's good. Better than we expected, but I think it's still good to, uh, offer this especially.
The end of June for the.
Yeah. Everything kind of got extended an extra month. Um, as we, um, as we did previous billings.
So it'll be roll call?
Yeah, roll bubble. Unless there are any other questions? Sorry, okay.
Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Markey?
Yes. All right, great. Second, uh, resolution tonight. This is the resolution that we discussed last time, authorizing, uh, donation. Uh, this is the Civicure, whereas Civicure previously made application to the Village of Huesic Falls Building Department for a building permit in connection with certain roof work on the building, uh, housing and its operations in the village. This is the one we discussed, uh, last time and wanted to do through official board motion. Now, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls and regular session duly convened as follows. Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a donation by the Village of Huesic Falls to Civicure in the amount of six hundred and forty-nine dollars and further authorizes any necessary budget transfer as determined by the village treasurer in order to effectuate such donation. Okay, thank you, Bobby, and thank you, Ben. Any discussion on this? Mark, have you told them this was coming? Okay, all right. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call vote again, please.
Trustee Pine? Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Bobby? Mayor Allen?
Yes. Beautiful. All right, uh, next resolution, authorizing payment of unused vacation benefit for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty in light of coronavirus pandemic. Again, something that we discussed last meeting, and we wanted to move in this direction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesic Falls and regular session duly convened as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the payment of unused vacation time for village employees for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty as set forth on the attached schedule which is made a part hereof, and further that such additional employee compensation shall be accounted as a village expense incurred due to the coronavirus pandemic. Looking for someone to offer this resolution? Ben? Second, thank you, Vanessa. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, roll bubble, please.
Trustee Pine? Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Markey? Mayor Allen?
Yes. All right, also passes unanimously. Um, we have a discussion regarding the hiring of three part-time police officers. Um, you guys.
Uh, Rob?
Yes, yes.
Before you move on to that, it's something we talked about, but quite frankly, we both neglected today, and it's not on the agenda, but there's a timing issue. And that's the resolution to adopt the county.
The hazardous.
Hazard mitigation plan?
Shoot.
That's okay. So while the meeting was going on, I looked at the proposed county form of resolution. Not my standard form, but, but it kind of does the job. And I amended it. I just emailed it to you?
I got it. I brought it up.
Short, so what you may want to do is just read it. It'll be new to the board members. It's fairly straightforward. If, uh, Mark can kind of fill in a little bit, this is adoption of the county hazard mitigation plan.
Mark, why don't I read this, and then if you want to fill in with anything, that's fine. Uh, my apologies on this. This is something that came from the county yesterday. But town supervisor got it to his board on time. I don't know what the village mayor's up to. All right, uh, this is a resolution adopting Rensselaar County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, Village of Huesic Falls Board of Trustees, resolution, whereas the Village of Huesic Falls with the assistance from AECOM and Rensselaar County Bureau of Public Safety has gathered information and prepared the Rensselaar County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas the Rensselaar County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousands. Whereas the Village of Huesic Falls is a local unit of government that has afforded the citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and the actions in the plan. And whereas the Village of Huesic Falls has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees that the Village, uh, of Huesic Falls adopts the Rensselaar County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as approved by FEMA and New York State in July twenty twenty as this jurisdiction's national, uh, natural, excuse me, natural hazard mitigation plan and resolves to execute the actions in the plan. Mark, do you want to, uh, no, Mark, you've been working on this, uh, quite a bit.
After coming along, look, we've identified the hazards for, uh, for those who fall on our first time, for the next five years. It's good for the American squad race, so what?
You know, it's funny you mention that, Woodsbrook, because, uh, Brian has been working on archiving down in the basement, and he found uh, a plan from the nineteen thirties where they considered making a reservoir up high um, to, uh, so that they would have to avoid using the cisterns for water at the time. Um, and it would also have helped handle the flow of water, uh, on heavier rainstorms. It was just fascinating to hear that, Ryan. Or, uh, Brian, every like week, he's got some new nuggets on stuff he's found down in the, uh, archives. Yeah.
Well, there is a small pond up there, but they were talking about putting that reservoir.
Yeah, wouldn't that be something? Uh, they've been doing fieldwork, uh, uh, right now during, uh, the past couple months. Yeah, this season, I, I, I feel like it's in the early fall, they're gonna have their fieldwork completed, and they're gonna start to come back with some, some, some details and reports and such. Yeah. No, that was a separate thing that FEMA. With the, with the county?
With the county.
Yeah. 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 Unfortunately, yes, the county sent it out late in the afternoon yesterday, right? The, the, uh, the twenty-eighth. And they sent it out on the, the day where towns have their board meetings typically. It's like, come on. No, no, I don't either, but, I mean, I called Neil and I called Mark, and they have been involved in this, and they were both good on, on signing off on it. Andy, concern brought up by, uh, Craig is, um, on this, it's, uh, paying, uh, signing off on something we haven't reviewed ourselves is not something uh, we, uh, are paid to do. Any thoughts on this?
Well, um, you certainly can take um, guidance from, you know, village personnel that were involved in the preparation of the plan and that have knowledge of it. As the plan was always just in the session with Mark, that was content. Uh, I can understand that the board members may want to have time to review the entire plan. Uh, that's legitimate. Alternatively, if you want to rely on input from village personnel, that's, that's adequate.
We could always go on Twitter and decry the, uh, the leader and all of them. No, 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 okay, never mind, never mind. Um, trustees, thoughts? Are you, um, okay to move on this? Want to review it? Um, the now therefore be resolved part by, um, Board of Trustees that the Village of Huesic Falls adopts the Rensselaar County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as approved by FEMA and New York State in July twenty twenty. Um, so to be, did we have somebody offer it yet?
No.
All right, so I'll put it out that way. Would someone like to offer this up? Thank you, Ben. Looking for a second? Thank you, Emily. Any further discussion on this? Well, we'll do a roll call vote for it as well.
Okay. Trustee Pine? Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Markey? Trustee Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. All right, pass this five-two. I was afraid, Bobby, you were gonna say no and put it all on me. I don't know if I can handle the pressure. Understood. Yeah, no, no. Yep. Thank you. It'll, it'll, it'll be a great reading, I'm sure. All right, um, uh, in, in return, in regards to the hiring of the three part-time officers, um, we did send out uh, the resumes. If there's any discussions we'd like to have, we would move to executive session. Um, I would like to briefly move to executive session. Um, so can I make the motion to move to executive session? Can I do that as mayor? I think I can. All right, why don't you make the motion? To discuss personnel. It should be very short. Uh, looking for, uh, we'd like to discuss something, uh, personnel related with this in executive session. Oh, Emily seconded. Okay, uh, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Um, yeah, we can have you in there. That's doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. It's fine, it's, it's certainly fine with us. Um, we're gonna move into executive session at seven thirty-three PM. I'm gonna pause the recording. I'm gonna turn off my Bluetooth. Andy, I'm gonna bring you in on my phone.
Yep.
And, uh, we'll, we'll be back, uh, shortly. Okay, it is seven fifty-two. We are back. Executive session ended at seven fifty with a motion by Ben seconded and by Emily voting unanimously. Uh, with that being said, uh, we are going to handle each of the officers, um, individually. Um, the first application we have here, if I can find it, is a motion for.